The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Tom Garty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Garty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Eisenach.
Here.
Alderman Sevenek.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
All are present, but the absence of Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding a change to our special use permit ordinance. Director Schrader, would you like to share with us what this is about?
That I would. Thank you, Mayor. So attached to the council packet today is a request for an ordinance amendment to the special use permit revocation section. Currently, what we have within this revocation section is that special use permits shall be automatically revoked one year after being granted and shall consist of basically being implemented if a building permit is issued or any specific action. It leaves, this current ordinance leaves a lot of open holes as to what if a special use permit was approved and was abandoned? What if the conditions were not followed? So basically, what staff has done is kind of looked at this and brought forward in ordinance, looking at adding in those additional circumstances that may arise with a special use permit. This would include the discontinuance of if the permit has not been issued within a year, if they fail to comply with the original conditions of that special use permit, it shall continue regardless of the ownership of the property. Major changes require the consideration back at the common council. And then it also talks about an appeals process. The one thing I guess I will note, or two things I will note, the public hearing document, the official document, was noted or inserted at the last page of the document, so that is out there. Just, it's at the end of the council packet where it should be at the start. So do apologize for that. And then secondly, in discussions with Attorney Strube last week, it was noted that we should make one additional modification. So at paragraph seven, it notes 30 days prior to the automatic revocation of such permit because we are talking about revocations, not just automatically, but ones that are staff commenced. We would like to remove that term "automatic" in that first line of paragraph seven as well. The Plan Commission did review and consider this at two meetings, so the last two months they had been discussing this and did make some minor modifications and tweaks as they had saw necessary in discussions with staff as well as that group. So staff and the Plan Commission are recommending approval of this, again with that one modification of removing the term "automatic" on that first line in paragraph seven.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to make comments on this this evening?
Is it working? Good evening. Sandra Deville Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I actually am glad to see this resolution and these modifications come through. There are many special use permits that are issued, and I, just because I've come to a lot of meetings, noticed for me most outstanding is signage and landscaping that are never complied with. But there are a few little things I do question. The new paragraph five, it says, "Any major modifications, alterations, blah, 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 shall require approval by the Plan Commission or Common Council." I would like the Plan Commission struck and that the approval should be by the Common Council because that's what the final approval would come through anyhow. Otherwise, it's just saying the Plan Commission could make an approval and the council wouldn't even have to know about it. So I would like that those words struck. And then paragraph seven was modified, and I have a question regarding if I were a business It said that notification would be done by first-class mail, acknowledged email, or in person, or promptly posted location. Well, I don't know of any business owner that's going to stand outside the front doors and look to see if they've got notified. In person, you have nothing in writing to document it. Email is technology that can go away. You have nothing in writing or paper. I would prefer it to be a certified return receipt. For a few dollars, you get acknowledgement from the federal post office that you gave them notification rather than anything else could be challenged, is my opinion. So other than that, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll call the public hearing closed and move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have minutes A through I and communications J through O. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve minutes A through I and communications J through O.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Just about the Plan Commission meeting minutes from March 7th. In reviewing them, I noticed that the item that's on tonight's agenda, the vote wasn't recorded in the minutes, so I just want to verify whether or not the motion carried. The question is about the Plan Commission minutes, item G. In reviewing those minutes, I noticed that the vote pertaining to the ordinance change this evening was not recorded in the minutes, and I just wanted to verify that that motion carried by the Plan Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, it did carry, I believe it was 8-0, so I apologize that that was not noted in here. That will get corrected before it gets sent back to council for approval.
Thank you.
Alderman Sevenek.
I don't know if now is the time to address it because it's in the minutes or later on because we had the public hearing, but we had some questions about that ordinance, and we don't have a copy of the full ordinance before us. We just have the amended changes. So I don't know where that section three that Mrs. Taylor was talking about, oh, wait. I do now.
It's probably best to talk about that when we get to that section, unless you, unless we need to go get something for you.
Hold on a second. Just give me. Tom, are you going to be making this motion? Okay.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comment on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I apologize for always taking up everyone's time, but I do have questions. I'm going to start with the administration committee, due to the fact there's no area for public comment on that committee. That is regarding the closure of TIFF4, which was designated for the ShopCo site. I basically have accounting questions. I am in favor of closing it. It never was one that I supported to start with because it was basically just a facade improvement. But my question is TIFF4, I'm taking these numbers from the board of review that met in December, the spreadsheet, so the numbers may be a little off. According to the spreadsheet, TIFF14 has a negative fund balance of around $39,000. The memo states that they're going to borrow money from TIFF13 to make up that deficit. However, when I look at the same report, the fund balance for TIFF13 shows in 2021, we transferred 75, or I'm sorry, $750,000 from TIFF5 to support TIFF13, plus new borrowing of $337,000 to support TIFF13, which TIFF13 is basically the entire downtown, from Water Street, the new tower, the parking ramp. According to this, it has remaining liabilities of over $5 million. And for 2022, the end-of-year fund balance was a negative $1.3 million. So I'm just questioning, if we're going to use this TIFF, so we're going to add more deficit to TIFF13. I just want that clarified because I don't know where else you're going to get the money from. But if someone could clarify those, that for me, thank you. Oh, then, on to the rest. You have the backyard chicken fact sheet and application in your packet tonight. I believe you have the $7 fee for the flock of chickens, which I'm not too crazy about. But my biggest issue is, in the language, it says "the health department inspector" or designee. Whenever you throw "designee," I think you're lowering the standards because that could be anybody. And I would prefer that the designee, granted Todd Drew is an extremely busy person, but I prefer that designee was struck from that. I did email the council regarding my opinion on the wage study. I don't know if any of you received it or if you read it, but I still think that money could be better used elsewhere, especially considering the big issue with that wage study is it never really refers to experience. It's just looking at job title versus job title, and experience in any occupation is a huge deciding factor on your wage. Under, let's see, the, under the check register, ironically, at the last meeting, I brought up asking about the Whiting Mill and how much money has been expended by the city since the disastrous fire. And I noticed in the check register, there are multiple checks issued totaling $2,500. Is this ongoing? This is all dated 3/16. How much money have we expended and where are those dollars coming from? Because I don't believe anything was called out in the budget specifically for that. Ironically, also in the check register, does anyone ever really look at the library expenses? Don't get me wrong, I love the library, but every month, it's at least $20,000 in expenses, and I'm just wondering if anyone ever questions any of that? And also, kind of, as a former council member used to call low-hanging fruit, meals and mileage, there is an actual travel expense policy regarding reimbursement for meals and mileage. Anything outside the Fox Cities, and it designates what is considered the Fox Cities, and it seems like we never had these expenses before, and they're always, they're small and they're minor, but they do add up in a year's time. And I know there was something else I did want to bring up. Ironically, I also noticed the mayor has his appointments to the ad hoc Cespen Swenil Committee. I attended one of the first meetings. There was probably a dozen people there, a great turnout, and I know a lot of people were interested. I'm glad to see that the mayor has found some people that are willing to serve on that board. I just was wondering how many people were not accounted for because you're going to need a lot of volunteers for that. And I think I will leave it at that. Have a good evening.
Is there anyone else this evening?
I wouldn't want to let this stand down.
It's okay.
Dan Evans, 859 Lotus Trail, Manassia. Not seeing anything in the newspaper about what's going on with the City of Manassia, having for years, and not knowing where to look, unfortunately. I have to ask, what's going on with No-Mo May? Anything new that anybody wants to talk to me about? Or is it a subject that we have hopefully completely dropped and forgot about?
What I can tell you, Dan, is that the Sustainability Committee meets this Thursday, and that's been an ongoing topic on their agenda. So if you are interested in learning more, that's probably the place to come check it out, or you could talk to Alderman Hammond outside of one of the meetings.
Has that been advertised to the community of any way?
The Sustainability Committee meetings are ongoing every month, yes.
Okay. But you're going to be putting the whole city in jeopardy if it is approved, and I think the city should be aware that you're looking at letting people let their lawn grow. People that are for it here, you committee members, you that are for this No-Mo May, have any of you driven around the city of Appleton by the end of May and seen how trashy it looks? And they don't cut the grass the 31st of May. You can still drive around the middle of June and see how trashy it looks. And we keep talking about beautifying Manassia. There's money being spent. You have TIFF districts to improve the appearance of Manassia. It just kind of seems a little step backwards to do something like this. And the other thing, I would like to invite any of you to come over and look at my yard once the snow is gone and see the damage that I have from the roads of the person next door that seems to have a No-Mo summer. I can just show you firsthand what you're going to get.
What's your address, sir?
859 Lotus Trail. When the snow melted in February, I've got poison baits out there to try to kill whatever is destroying the yard, and you are just going to get that throughout the whole community. And besides, you're trying to, what, what is the purpose of this No-Mo May? For bees? How far do bees travel? You can go, the bees that you're going to have downtown aren't going to travel miles away for agricultural purposes, if that's what you're looking at. And all you got to do is take a drive outside the city, and you will see there is plenty of pollination going on. It just doesn't make any sense to me, not for beautification purposes. The other thing I'd like to do is thank this young lady for keeping an eye on the city. I have often wondered what kind of transparency is there on these 20-year TIFF districts? How many of these TIFF districts actually end up paying off afterwards? And how many of them go belly up or close down? You know, I think there's been other TIFF districts right along Main Street over the 40 years that I've lived here that seem the 20 years are up and whoever the TIFF district was for is gone already. Is there transparency on any of that stuff? Like I say, I'm glad somebody's watching over. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? And I'll get you some information on the TIFFs too, Dan, okay? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Alderman Sevenek. Oops, I'm sorry. Right this way.
Thank you. I'd like at this time for us to approve the Common Council minutes of 3623.
Is there a motion, a second? So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing no one, motion carries. Item two is the personnel committee recommendations. Alderman Garty.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I too would like to recommend the council approve the Carlson-Dietman Consulting City of Manassia, Wisconsin Certification and Compensation Study Proposal, not to exceed $32,150.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Randy, did you have discussion?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Can you unplug your battery and plug it back in and press the button?
We thought we had everything fixed before the meeting. It was all working, and it's still, it was the clerk, whichever one of these two. So it was this one, then.
Is that the right number up there?
Needs an extra zero on it, right?
And it was in voting mode?
Yeah, $150.
I think it was in voting mode.
Okay. Well, there it went. Becky's went now. No Tom, though, this time. And Austin either.
Put your mic on, turn your mic off, and then hit.
Does that one work? Are there just?
Does your neighboring one work, Tom?
I didn't have a light on my boat either. I pressed the button and it worked.
Oh, there it goes. I'm not sure which one you are.
I'm out. I'm out. Two three, consider. Two better. My boat isn't home. I got confused by helping out.
So.
Let's pull it and re-vote if that's okay. It works. It all works.
You were agreeing.
I know.
Can you press the next button?
It doesn't, it doesn't work. Now Becky's doesn't work again? So we did order, look to order a new microphone that we think will fix this problem, but we thought we had it fixed. Unfortunately, it's not.
Ants' batteries seems to work. Do you want that one?
I don't think that should matter.
I don't think it's, there it went.
Motion carries four three.
Okay, hopefully the next vote's easier. Item I is action items. The first item is accounts payable and payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols. Oops. Doesn't, oh, there we go. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of March 3rd through March 16th in the amount of $1,242,179.78.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. Alderman Repella.
Thank you. Jennifer, could you please explain the Diamond Tours to Mount Rushmore?
Which one are you? There you go. It does appear to be on. Talk loud.
Okay. That is one of the trips that is being put under Senior Center. That's not an expenditure of the city. We collect money from those.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We can't hear.
Okay. So the expenditure is a trip that the Senior Center is putting on, and 100% of the cost of that trip is covered by the ticket sales that people are paying.
Jennifer, I do have one more question. On the Whiting Mill, I'm sorry, the fence rental, you had five consecutive payments of $500 on page 16. So how did the fence rental cost us $2,500? Or is that overspent over five months, or did we just, we're negligent in paying it for five months and paid it all at once? So that had, it is a $500 monthly charge. We have obviously heightened our security walls, our firewalls, and those were being blocked for a period of time, so we were not getting those, but they are taken care of now. And to answer the other question, these, the bills to the Whiting site are in and out of the fund, so whatever we pay for does get billed out against the property that we will be looking for. And staff can work on an update in the coming meetings regarding the Whiting site. So in other words, the price of the land is going up, including with that $500 every month? That's being added to the purchase price of the new, of the land? It is being put against the property. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Item two is the Winnebago County foreclosure listing amendment. Do we have a motion? Alderman Garty.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to motion to direct the staff to execute the listing contract with Kyle Keel to professionally list 127 First Street, 1220 Grove Street with the conditions that were approved on January 16, 2023.
Is there a second? So motion and a second. Is there discussion? Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first is resolution six. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I move that we approve R 623. This is a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under section 66.0703 of the Wisconsin statutes.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second by Alderman Hammond? Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
Uh, just for the public and people in the gallery, this is to assess for the road that's Warsaw Street where the new quick trip is going to go. So on the other side of where the soccer field is. So it's between the soccer field and the Bubba's property, basically.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Item two is resolution nine. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to bring forward resolution 923, a resolution establishing a fee for the keeping of chickens in the city of Manassia introduced by myself.
Is there a second? Is a motion and a second by Alderman Hammond? Is there discussion? Alderman Grady?
Oh, no.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, if we could have a roll call vote, please? We got two that aren't working again, it looks like. We might have to take roll call votes the rest of the night.
Motion carries five two.
Item L is appointments. And before we move forward with that, I just wanted to share a little update on the Sesquicentennial Committee. Did I miss one? Oops. Okay, let's go with number three. I crossed it off already. Ordinance three. Oh, that's an important one, too. Do we have a motion for ordinance three? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll bring ordinance three 23, an ordinance amending title 13, chapter one, article B of the code ordinances, a revocation of special permits introduced and recommended by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer an amendment. That amendment is under the area of revocation. Item five, where it says planning commission or common council, I want it to say planning commission and common council.
There's a motion and a second to amend? Is there any discussion on the amendment? I'm not sure who is first. Alderman?
Austin.
Alderman Hammond?
Yeah, I just, I think this is a good idea. I just had a question if we want to take the recommendation for the other amendment to take the word automatic out of that same section for.
That could be the next amendment.
I didn't know, oh, yeah. I didn't know if we could do more than one amendment or we want to do separate.
One might feel one way about one and then the other, you know what I'm saying?
It was more of a clarification to see if you wanted to adjust your amendment to account for that. Sounds good. All right, I will do that.
Alderman Nichols, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. What is the practice right now, Director Schrader? If there are modifications that are ever brought forward, I'll just say that. Oh, my goodness.
I got two bikes and we're over.
The blue light was flashing on this.
I got a red light? All right. So basically, how this is kind of worded is kind of how the policy is followed currently. So again, if you're doing a major renovation, major modification, we would take that through the process. If there's a slight modification, again, we wouldn't take it through the full process again. So, and I'm okay with the amendment.
Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to help clarify and make sure I got this right from the meeting, that this happened, the prominently posted location.
We're just talking about the amendment right now to.
Oh, okay.
Common council and planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Alderman Nichols?
I just had one more question now that I'm thinking about the process. Would a major modification also require or have a public hearing attached to it?
I gotta, let me look up that code section that it's referencing.
Correct. So that is basically following the procedure of a brand-new specialty use permit. So that does require the public hearing notice, the planning commission approval, and the common council approval.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Sevenek?
So we are addressing major modifications, so that's why I'm offering that amendment. If what you were saying, if there was something small and that we didn't want to have to bring back or whatever, I think that should be written in somewhere else and defined what isn't major. Otherwise, I'm in favor of my motion as it stands.
So the motion, the amendment that's on the floor is to have both the council and the planning commission approve major modifications, correct? Do we need a roll call or voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the amendment carries. Then Austin, did you want another amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I wasn't sure when the best time to offer the amendment was, if we wanted lump two or not. But my amendment that I would like to make would be for seven, where it says 30 days prior to automatic revocation, to strike that out, correct, Director Schrader? Is that the recommendation?
So to remove automatic in item seven, correct?
Just the word automatic.
Just the word automatic, correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
All second.
We've got a couple of seconds. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Do we have more discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote as amended.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, now we're on appointments. And I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update on the Sesquicentennial Committee. As all of you know, 1874 was the incorporation of Manassia as a city, and we're going to be holding a celebration next year. We advertised on the city website as well as some of our social media to gather people to be part of this committee, and we had a really good turnout to just discuss what we were thinking about doing and who wanted to be on the committee. We've had two of those discussions with groups of probably 15-ish people one time and 10-ish people the second time, February 9th and March 16th. We talked a little bit about what the special events and things that happened on our 100th anniversary and our 125th anniversary, what Nina was doing for their Sesquicentennial. As the structure of this group that we'd like to create to help run these events, so that right now I'm proposing that we appoint a steering committee of four people based upon the interest of people that were at some of those early meetings. They'll start to lay the groundwork of what an organization needs to have to coordinate this Sesquicentennial Committee. Couldn't we have an easier word to pronounce? And we expect there to be additional appointees based upon the types of activities, contests, and exhibits that the leadership determines is needed for each. So I would assume that we're going to have some committee chairs and event chairs that we'll be doing again as this group gets flushed out a little bit further. The first meeting of this ad hoc committee, if it's appointed tonight, is scheduled for March 30th. That doesn't mean that you have to be one of those four people to attend. In fact, we would like to have a lot more people attend so we can continue to gather that interest and hopefully appoint some of those people to be committee chairs. So if there's any. Yep. At city hall at six, and I do have a list of people that attended the first two times and will send that out to everyone as well. With that, if there's any questions about what's happened or where we're going, I'd be happy to answer those. Or if there's a motion, we can appoint all four of them at once if you so desire. Alderman Grady?
I'll appoint them all at once with one correction. You have Sarah Bowers' name spelled incorrectly.
Oh, sorry.
So it's Sarah Bowers, Shirley Hines, Rachel Dowling, and George Davis to the ad hoc Sesquicentennial Committee.
Is there a second?
All second. If it's D A U.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Sarah is sitting in the front row here this evening, if anyone has not met her. We're excited to keep, we're excited to keep this moving forward. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone who has comments? And we're going to have to find a mic for them.
Turn it on first.
Is it on?
Well, I got mine right here. It's blinking, so just give it a second. It's Wi-Fi.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay. Ironically, at budget meeting, I requested that instead of $30,000 for the wage study that microphones and cameras and all this be addressed, and it's not happening. Okay, two things I wanted to comment. With the 150th birthday, I would strongly suggest the ad hoc committee meeting be posted on the website and include minutes and agendas. I'm assuming budgetary money is going to be allocated toward this event, and the public should be invited to attend these meetings even if they are not on the committees. Then, thank you for addressing one of the two issues I had regarding the special use permit modifications. Another item that I realized after I sat down that I did not address was, as a business owner again, appeals can be brought forward to the city planning commission meeting for their consideration. The problem with that is there is no public comment on anything other than what is on the agenda on the planning commission meeting agenda. So if a business owner came to talk about the revocation of their special use permit, they wouldn't be allowed to talk. So that is something that you should consider. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, if there is a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We urge you, thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the city of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about city of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.